I'd like to call to order the March twenty-three, two thousand and twenty-three, twenty-three, priority-setting work session in Ketchikan. Quick, we'll follow along.
Kissler.
Here.
Gage.
Here.
Bradbury.
Here.
Matani.
Here.
Flora.
Here.
Gas.
Here.
Finnegan.
Here.
Ball, please join us for a budget meeting.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The Ketchikan City Council would like to respectfully acknowledge the traditional First People of this land in Ketchikan, the Tongas-Linkin people. In terms of communications, we have a plea on the table from the manager's office and clerks. You have also... Well, welcome back, Councilmember Gage. You're back, well, at least most of you are back.
All that's left.
Oh, I lost what? Three force of it.
You seem much happier. And congratulations, Mr. Gas.
Thank you. You're here.
Okay, persons to be heard. Is there anyone out there who would love to address us tonight? Seeing none, we're going to move into a work session, which involves discussion and council priority setting of the twenty-nine items. Twenty-nine items? There's a bunch of them. Twenty-nine items on our list. I was told the manager had wanted to take charge of this, so I guess I...
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, councilmembers. You have before you a list of future agenda items that I could pull together based on past meetings, as well as what I've heard from councilors since I've been here. As I mentioned in my memo, my priority is going to be our staff compensation, recruitment, and retention, simply because we're coming up to a new CBA discussion with IBW. Our next collective bargaining agreement is set to expire at the end of this week. We have recognized, I think I was talking to Marie, and we have something like twenty-four vacancies. And granted, a lot of those are temporary positions that we hire for the season, but obviously we have vacancies. I'll pick on the wastewater supervisor. We have not had a single applicant. So we're going to be coming to you to change that job grade because we've had one applicant in the last year, and our compensation, as well as our retirement plan, was not sufficient for them to make the change in Ketchikan. So we know that's an issue. We also know with our wastewater operators in general, it's getting harder and harder to have Level Two operators for the treatment that we require. I'd like to see a job description review and analysis. There's a lot of our jobs that have evolved as we have changes through COVID and staff changes. And then my focus is really to have employee development and career plans and training programs and things like that. So I listed some of its repetitive, but that's obviously just on the staff side. Anything related to employee retention and recruitment would be a priority for me. In the items that you have listed, you'll see a lot of them are in progress. Like, we've, for example, the last item we had, future agenda item, was from councillor Gas to change, add shuttles to our public conveyance ordinance. That was just a language change, so it's something Mitch already popped out. And it's just a slight change that he can make. We'll have that ready at the April sixth meeting. The travel policy, I haven't, Finance and HR and Lacy have reviewed it, so Department heads will review it, making sure. So we'll have that ready by the middle of April meeting. Council Matani, your request for the analysis of credit card fees. Finance is working on that. They're just doing a little audit, so we'll have... So a lot of this is in progress. So what I really need to know is those high, high time and investment items, like really what's going to be impactful and take a lot of work. So the others that I think are important is that we do define that relationship with our community grants program and the KBB, and what objectives the city wants out of it. And I know we have future work sessions planned for those. That, those are a big one. And I think it's reasonable, if you set three or four priorities, to let us really focus on that. I'll give an example, like the shore power item that's coming up. Those funds are being leased now. That's a priority, not just for the electric division, but for the port of Ketchikan. And that's going to take tremendous resources and efforts to not only go after the grant funds, but also to facilitate such projects. So that's a big one. For me personally, the rate-setting process and coming up with new rate-setting policies is really important. That way, we have a defined public input process. We have better analysis expectations. Right now, we're just saying, these are our rates. This is our revenue. This is our expense. This is what we anticipate changing, and we need X percentage. And that's not really good policy because your rate policy has to have, this is how we deal with long-term CIP. This is how we build it into rates. This is how we build future debt into rates. This is how we remain competitive in the southeast. So a simple rate comment would be, we want to remain lower than X neighbors or Y neighbors, or whatever that may be, or we want to remain competitive and open to businesses and residents. And whatever that policy may be, those are things I'd like to establish. Of course, I'm coming to it from a utilities director standpoint and not a city council standpoint or a city manager standpoint because that's where my math love resides, is in rate setting. So those are, those are my general suggestions. But of course, I'd like to see, you talked about this, having future budget planning and getting ready for good budget policy. So we get through that process and we meet the goals and objectives of the council.
So did you guys want to go down? Do you want to go down the list and talk about each item? Or how would you prefer we do it?
That's right, I'm sorry. If I could just suggest that if you have your own top three or four, maybe that would be easier instead of going through each one.
Just wanted to make sure no one felt left out.
I have a question.
I'm sorry.
I'll do that.
Ms. Bradbury, then.
Yeah, I was just going to start. So I guess over the last month, two months or so, I've heard a lot from the staff in general. And it kind of has changed my, my personal priorities sitting, you know, at this table because obviously you guys know I was gun-hole on some major policy changes and whatnot. But after listening to the employees and whatnot, I'm thinking, personnel, we really need to get that under control. And I just wrote, I tried to write things up so that it would be brief. So I'll just kind of read through this. Currently, we are at a critical juncture with our staff. Our staff is unhappy right now, and it doesn't have to do solely with pay. The work environment needs to be improved. If staff keep leaving because of the environment, we will not have anyone to complete any of the tasks or projects that we have set priorities. We did give some raises, of course, not to where everyone should be, but what we can afford. I would like us to focus on what we can do to improve the environment. Is it regarding, is it regrading employees? Is it rewriting job descriptions to ensure staff are being paid for what they are being required to do? Is it finding an abundance so that our staff feel comfortable talking to somebody about any issue that comes up in their department? Is it ensuring our culture allows for a safe environment to speak up and to feel heard and not degraded? I agree with the city manager that this needs to be addressed first. I also want to let staff know that I am listening to what they're saying, and I wholeheartedly want to put a lot of effort into trying to make it better for our employees here. My other, you know, that's number one. The other two that kind of stood out to me was defining the KBB as well, but also getting potentially the tourism position in there and seeing how that can increase revenue within our community to help overall, not just at the port, but in other areas. Is that meaning get people out into the upland so that they're buying more, giving more sales tax? Is that giving more people at the Ted Ferry or events at the Ted Ferry or filling beds so we get more transient tax? I feel like this position really could, you know, help increase revenue off of just those, those four ports. So I feel like right now, you know, we're, we're raising rates. And I just think maybe we need to back up a little bit and see if we can try to find revenue sources versus just going straight into the rates. And I know that that one's in progress, so, but I just wanted to say that. And the third one I have is, it kind of goes along with rate-setting policies, but also looking at our revenue sources within those specific departments. Is it ensuring that our fees at the port are, you know, worth our time to offer those services? Is it going out for recs like the electric department is doing to bring in extra cash? Is it finding other opportunities, Ted Ferry going and bringing in new events? Or, you know, trying to encourage the departments to seek outside? Like, how can we grow our services to help offset our rates so that we can try to not, obviously, we know we have to increase rates, but we don't want to price our citizens out. So it kind of goes with rate-setting to ensure we don't price them out, but also to focus on thinking outside the box on generating revenue in each department. Most departments give off some sort of services. And so if we could just expand on that or find these opportunities to increase and let our staff, you know, do what they do. So that's kind of my top three after really thinking through things. Obviously, the, the whole list is great. And yes, down the line, I would love to see them done, but that's kind of where my, my thought was this time.
Ms. Gage, you have a question?
The question I have was on the, with the rate, not the rates, the shore power. Is that something that they're spending grant money for?
Yes, well, Mr. Mayor, councillor, what we're doing is the state does have funds available for the sustainability funds. And so we'll be meeting with them on an MOA to do a port electrification or shore power master plan. Once we have that done, then we're going to know the real cost of it because we already know our ratepayers, our seven thousand customers in Ketchikan cannot afford a twenty-five, thirty-five, forty-five million dollar project for shore power. So that will give us the dollar amount and what our plan is if we need to phase it. Are there partners that we can have, partnerships, things like that?
Or if it's worth doing.
Or, yeah, or if it's even worth doing. And that's part of that feasibility analysis as well as...
Well, it also gives industry the idea of what we're talking about because they've, they have said they're willing to take part. But, you know, obviously, and we've also made very clear to them too that we're not, you know, the community is not funding this. Yeah.
My priority is to making sure the employees are happy. That's why that agenda item that I have, that we've capped salaries for you employees, we've got to look at it because we are starting to lose senior employees and we're going to lose senior employees. And with our rate right now, we are not attracting other employees qualified to replace these employees. So we've got to look at, at, that's my urgent priority. The safety of the employees, the culture in which our employment exists at the city right now. We're losing a lot of people. We have a lot of frustrations of employees who have been tapped out. So that's my priority, to make sure our employees at the city live in the culture, that they are happy, they, they are accountable, but the city needs to be accountable to them as well. And they need to know that they can speak up. They can approach the manager. They can approach HR and be heard and not be pushed aside. I mean, by being heard doesn't mean, okay, you talk, and then what they have expressed is pushed aside. And that's what I'm hearing from a lot of employees. That's the frustration. And for a city to run efficiently and for our city to run efficiently for a small community and then the community that we have during the summer, we need a culture and a setting where the employees are happy, that they will be productive and helpful to move the city forward. That's my priority.
Yeah, follow up. To follow up on Ms. Gage's question on the shore power, have we, and if we have, how seriously have we contacted or tried to engage the cruise lines on financially partnering in that project? Is that, I'm sure you guys are doing that. Can you just share on that a little?
Mr. Mayor, councilmember Gas, we don't have anything to give them yet. So we, we don't have a proposal. We've heard from the cruise lines and Celia in particular gave us a very comprehensive overview of what their expectation is with the new green corridor. There you go. So we know the emissions reduction is already an expectation for the industry. And so regarding the actual partnership, the only thing we've got as far as a commitment was we'll write you a letter of support or we'll help you get other federal funding. But as the mayor mentioned in those discussions that I've had with, with the cruise lines, it's been the message of our ratepayers are not going to bear the burden of that service because we can't. I mean, it's just mathematically impossible that our, our ratepayers are going to bear the burden of that development. It has to be a partnership. So nobody's making any commitments yet and simply because it's an issue throughout the entire corridor.
And follow up on that. Excuse me for sounding naive because I'm not super educated on this, but I just, it seems to me, obviously, there'd be an enormous cost to install shore power. But do we know? Would it, once it's in, would it be, would it be thought to be cheaper when the ship's here to be on shore power than to run there? And obviously, it depends what happens with the price of fuel and everything, but do we know on that?
And you're absolutely correct because it depends also on the, if there's a debt service that's funding it or whatever the infrastructure investment is. Obviously, if the federal government gave us twenty million dollars, it would lower the rate of delivering that service to the ships. A, a good example is through the Alaska Marine Highway System. Talking to DOT, they're very committed to having electric ferries. We know that's coming down the line, and that's in their development plans. And so maybe that's a first start. If the state has funding available to develop shore power for the ferry system, and I don't know what that is, but...
Or shore power for the ferries, not ferries that run on electricity.
Both.
Both.
Really?
Well, I'm going to talk. So we're clear, they're talking about, like, for example, if indeed they built the dock down here in Saxon, you could have electric ferry going back and forth.
But not from here to Juneau.
No.
Okay.
So we, we don't know, no industry's willing to put their foot in their dollar end just yet, but the green corridor expectation is there. So we just need to know how responsive we can be. By having that master plan, at least we know the cost and we know the possibilities and we know where it can go.
We did hear when we were up in Juneau a couple of weeks ago too, that clearly, clearly the, the, the industry's been contacting Limpf Sledge as well, you know, pushing the state into, because all of a sudden DOT was suddenly all over, we're, we're going to help you with this, we're going to help you plan. So there is clearly movement from this end. But yeah, I, the, the big issue is that, yeah, we, while we would all love to have them on shore power, we're not going to be able to pay for it. And they understand that, I think.
So with this, how many, we're talking, would the, this feasibility plan will be done in twenty twenty-two?
I don't know yet. Our staff's meeting with DOT in April, and we'll be able to get the MOA. So the goal is to have a feasibility study or a master plan by next year. That one's in progress, but it is, once we get going on the MOA, I think it will take a lot of resources.
Ms. Gage.
I also think that the employees, taking care of the employees is definitely our, our, should be our highest priority. We got it, we need to get those key positions in, and we need to take care of the lower positions and build them up so that they can take over those higher positions later. I also think it's really important to, I, I think a grant writer is really important right now when there's all those grants out there. We need to take advantage of that. And, and the, and the shore power, we need to take advantage of those resources that are out there right now that can help us with those items. I would also like to do something about the Bottom Street lot sometime soon. We need to discuss what we want to do with it because it's, it's languishing there. And if someone has some great ideas about it, they, they need to be, we need to be talking about it so we can plan for that and, and have that put to use instead of just sitting there.
Really, this being used for, I, I go by it many times a day. It's being used.
Yeah, the parking, yeah.
So clearly, it is established there is need for parking.
Oh, yeah.
Well, that's the best use of that lot, I don't know, but it ain't sitting empty, that's for sure.
I'll just weigh in on that real quick and then go through my little list, I guess. I, I agree on, when that came out, I actually contacted Lacy at the time, and a couple of people came in with this grand idea that we should put in an outdoor basketball court for the kids there. And I thought that was the best thing we could do there. And then I saw it's plum full every day, and I figured, well, for no cost, it's being used by the neighborhood. We've heard a lot of complaints about parking in that neighborhood. You know, I, I think for now, it's, it maybe doesn't hurt just to let it do that. But I agree with Ms. Kissler. If somebody has a better idea, I'd be listening to it. My number one thing, I guess, is kind of a cross between strategic business plan and the budget policy. I think as, is definitely up there in my number one slot. My thoughts or goals with that is to figure out a way, moving forward, where, but all possible, our departments can, we can maybe basically have less of an increase in growth each year because, you know, we do the budget and we hear cuts, 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 cuts. I'm not, I don't want to cut. I don't want to come through and fire people or lay people off. But just soberly looking at the increase in spending in all of our departments across the board, obviously, there's going to be increases for fuel, for inflation, for personnel costs as they negotiate a higher wage. But many of our departments are seeing substantial growth from fifteen to forty percent year over year. And I, I think it's worth putting some effort into trying to dial that back, live within our means, and, and just be a little more economically responsible with how some things are ran. Like I said, I understand that some, some areas, you just, there's nothing you can do. But I think there is more we can do there. Couple other ones on my list, I agree with the shore power, at least exploring it. I think that's, could really be cool. It could be good for the environment, good for the city. It would bring in a lot more revenue potentially. But I agree with the mayor also that it's not going to be on the backs of citizens. So hopefully, we can get some grants and partnerships. And the other one we've discussed, and it's on here, and I understand it, I think the manager said it would be later on, maybe in June, we could start talking about it. But I want to get the port fees for the cruise ships. Forget the term we use sometimes, but basically where they go up a little bit every year, whatever that percentage is, it's been talked about. I think everybody kind of agrees. And I understand there's some bigger discussions going on in that realm right now. So I, I understand that that's not top priority at this minute. I'd like to see that going forward. And then the other thing I wrote, I don't quite know what the bullet point would be, but it's a very broad topic, but I guess you would just say tourism. Two years ago, during COVID, I was firmly of the belief that we should do nothing to restrict the tourism industry, that we had no tourism industry. I thought if anything, we should do anything possible to make it easier. Now we're in a different time, we're seeing a huge rebound. And I, I do have to say, I put a lot of thought into it, and, and I'm very uneasy at this idea that every year, we're going to expand two weeks on either end of the season and two hundred thousand people. I mean, I'm a free market guy. I'm not in favor of the city just putting it, saying, nope, you can't come. But I think it's worth at least keeping an eye on and discussion on. Like I say, I've kind of been on the other side of this topic a lot, but I don't hear anyone that, I haven't heard from anyone in town that thinks we don't have enough tourists, excluding COVID years, you know? And the term you always hear is, you know, well, eventually, you're going to make it where the people don't want to come here. I guess we're not there, but it can be rather unpleasant sometimes. So I just think, at least, giving the locals their time of year. And on top of that, who wants to come here in November anyways? But I think it's worth just keeping the discussion and keeping an eye on that is with, you know, very cautiously, but keeping an eye on it.
Addressing the point you made earlier about limiting growth, I mean, the, the one thing the council can do in virtually the councils in the past or the, or some is to say, okay, this is the number, we're, we're not going to increase any more than two percent or three percent or whatever. You can, you can, you can do that as part of the budget process. And then staff, and if we do that now, early enough in the year, staff knows they can work with that. And that's probably, I know that's, it doesn't always work. That's, that's starting point. You can say, look, we, we don't want to see growth any more than, give them, give them their figure and whatever it is, and let them come back and say, here's how we get there. So that actually is a good idea.
Appreciate that.
I just want to follow up on that. Is that something that we could, like, schedule a meeting prior to the staff? Because I don't think we've ever actually sat here and said, okay, here, us at the council, like, what are our parameters that we want to give and take so that we aren't nitpicking and doing thirty-seven amendments over, you know, four weeks? So I just don't know if that's something maybe we could start a little bit sooner because I, I do think those are some very valid points that maybe we should look at.
And the earlier we give it to staff, the more likely they can come up with something that we're sure of.
Wasn't that part of the rationale for these summer sessions? Was to get in front of this, right? So we can incorporate those ideas proactively for the staff.
I'm liking a lot of what I'm hearing. I find myself on the same page as a lot of the other council members. And with respect to Ms. Walsh's recommendations, I'm in agreement with her that these should, those that she has identified as items she'd like to be priorities should be priorities. I'm in agreement with you there. And with respect to the first that's listed, which is an employee satisfaction survey, I think that's one step in the effort toward addressing concerns that council members, Bradbury and Kissler and others, are connecting with respect to staff happiness, which of course is, is critical, especially in a time when it's difficult to fill positions that are already vacant. With respect to the subset of topics, as I went through them, there were a handful that jumped out at me. Obviously, shore power, it's, seems like time is a, is a factor there. There, because there are maybe some resources available now that might be, that might not be as readily available later. That pushes that up for me just by virtue of the timing. But two of the others that I think are incredibly important are the, the tourism management position and the grant writer solution, in part because individuals or teams in either of those roles are going to be tackling a lot of the bigger picture items that come before this council anyway. And if we have someone who is dedicated to either finding new funds in the source of a grant writer, for example, I mean, that may, we may see a return on investment in a position like that in a matter of two years or sooner. So I think there's a lot of value in investing in that position. And with respect to tourism, something Mr. Gas just brought up, it's such a critical part of so much of the engagement we have, not only with the services the city offers, but with the community at large. And I'm, I'm still of the mind that having someone focused on that is going to be able to marshal resources that we might not be identifying ourselves as a body and being a conduit for information between departments so that we have like a central point of contact for dealing with some of the issues that come up by way of, of the tourism industry here. A, a third that jumped out at me that we haven't really talked about much is the vehicle maintenance and replacement program. And it comes to mind to me for a couple of reasons. One, I know with respect to acquisition of new vehicles, it was a sticky point in the budget process for virtually every department that requested one. And two, it seemed like too often, knowing that there's a long lag in procurement, knowing that these, some of these vehicles are enormously expensive, it felt like too often we were reacting to a bad situation rather than having a plan in place with a clear sense of the inventory of vehicles that are in our operation now. And circling back to the point about staff happiness, knowing that we had employees in dangerous situations by virtue of, of vehicles in poor condition is a matter of enormous concern. And not only for their safety, but in addition, because of liability involved and the expense of responding to, say, an incident is going to, I think, it's, it's bad in terms of cost and it's bad in terms of look, and I just don't want anybody getting hurt. But I think if we have a, a better sense of what's in inventory, what needs replacing, and on what schedule, those acquisitions, those requests for vehicle improvements, vehicle repairs, or vehicle purchases aren't going to be so much sticky when it comes to the budgeting process. So that jumped out at me as well. I'd push that up myself.
Ms. Ford. Well, I won't belabor the point, but I agree with everybody who mentioned staffing, employee morale. I'm a hundred percent on board with that. So I, I need not say more with that.
So I, I need not say more with that. Um, one of my priorities is going to be a complete review of that chapter of the municipal budget in regard to the visitors bureau and economic development. Uh, I'm mostly done with that. There's a little bit more work to do and um, working on, I'll be working on that with council member Redberry. When we talk about sending rates and fees and impacts to locals, one of the things I brought forward was I would like to see an independent analysis. This is one of my priorities of the impacts of tourism on every single department. I'm sure there is a percentage of expense that's attributable to everything that we go through in that budget binder. That can be legitimately tied to the operation of tourism and therefore can be tied to legitimate use of CTV funds. If some of those funds can be redirected towards expenses that are related to that. And of course, this would involve a discussion with CLIA, but if we say X department spends fifteen percent of their time dealing with things that are related to tourism, it's a legitimate ask. And it lessens having to turn to the rate payer and go, I need more from you now. So that's one of my priorities. The, the budget process, we've talked about that a little bit. I'm really happy to see these discussions and workshops on a performance-based budget upstream of the November line item slog. Um, I'm really hopeful that's going to be quite a bit better. Um, and then um, I think my other one, in, in regards to Mr. Gass's comment, I actually hadn't had written this one down, but I think I agree with him. In conjunction with the tourism manager position, we, we have to come to the acknowledgement in the history of tourism in this town, that's not nineteen ninety-three anymore. But it still kind of gets treated that way. Every policy, every procedure, everything we do is based on this marketing and attraction thing. We're past that. We're down to capacity and impact management. That's not to um, diminish or, or discount the value of tourism to our economy. It's obviously critical, but as Mr. Gass alluded to, at some point you're going to rein in the product. Without substantial and deliberate changes, we are on the path to Barcelona and Venice. There's without a doubt. Uh, they're just five or 10 years ahead of us, but that's the trajectory that we're on. So I think those are my top ones. And then since we had to come here for an extra meeting, I'm going to give in one snarky comment. I have no um, issue to not support shore power, but I, I think things, we want a green corridor. I think you have to look at things that are actionable and achievable and rational that can be pulled off. I'm not that interested in talking about a green corridor at forty million dollars until we can drive down the highway and not be behind buses that are such gross polluters, they shouldn't be on the road. Now I brought it up at a meeting earlier when we had the gentleman from CLIA. And, and the question probably, he wasn't prepared to answer it and that's not his fault. The question was probably asked at the wrong time. But in the end, the product of tourism is actually our home. It's not tours, it's not trinkets, it's not zip lines, it's all of those things. But it's our home and I think it's a completely rational expectation that the people that live in this community that invite this industry into our town should be able to drive around and not be doing it in a cloud of soot. It wasn't snarky enough, but I'll leave it at that.
You'll get another one in Mark.
Yeah, we still, we still have comments. You can, you can, you can hold your fire for a couple of degrees.
Yeah.
Yes.
To add, well, I guess, um, I agree with everybody. I think that just looking at the shore power is important. Boy, uh, retention and acknowledging if you're in that area arena are important. Um, definitely grant riders so that we can tap into what the funding that's coming down the pipe. And I think there's and, and the tourism position along with the um, that inventory schedule, I think, I think you're right. It's um, I think that if we're going to require people like cabinets and stuff to have certain regulations on their vehicles, we should also be following the same rules. Um, on how our vehicles are safe for our employees. Because most businesses are required to have the same. I also think that maybe we need to look at, based on the Flores' narky comment is that our ordinances regarding vehicles that are not aren't blowing smoke up the back end and don't have mufflers on. I mean, I know that um, I've noticed in the last three weeks, four weeks, sitting at home in, on the bottom floor, just how loud they are. Uh, I live on Third Avenue, so um, I just never noticed it because my office is way upstairs. So I don't normally hear it as much. This last couple of weeks, it's been, yeah, with the window open. Yeah, it's like a um, racetrack out there. But I also think that um, it's, our ordinances are old when it comes to some of how we address those issues. That might be where we started. Like requiring the buses that they bring here have the same regulations that they have in those other areas that have green corridors. I don't know how that works, but.
So this is probably for the manager around those lines, but I know, I know back pre-COVID, Alaska Department of Environmental Conservation was making a big deal about they, they put up a very, a whole bunch of, you know, monitors over the community. And they were supposedly monitoring, you know, particularly over here, the, you know, what was going on in birth three. Um, because that seemed to be the biggest issue in terms of, they were also, so they were supposed to start monitoring the bus emissions. And I guess it'd be worth checking with them to see whether that went anywhere. Did they come up with any numbers? Cause frankly, when it comes right down to it, we can't really, um, yeah. At this point, we're not allowed to be the hammer on that status. And maybe if DEC has some issues, they can, you know, approach that. I know it was a big issue with council member Berger on here. And at that point, it's three or four years ago, the state was, was looking into it, but then I think, I, I have to assume that because of COVID, that kind of went off, off the rails a bit, but.
Mr. Mayor, can I ask, was it A dot or D E C?
D E C. Yeah, it was Department of Environmental Conservation.
They started what, twenty nineteen?
Eighteen, nineteen, yeah. I mean, they made a big deal about, they, they, they literally put like four or five monitoring stations over the community to do that.
I don't know if we still do it. I'm not going to throw them under, but I could ask you.
I just got to weigh in a little. Uh, I'm, don't disagree with the buses. I mean, if they're going to bring them here, they should be clean and all that. I do just have to say, I'm not in favor of uh, putting monitors over uh, as far as people's personal rigs and stuff like that. I think there are areas of the country where they do that and more power to them. But there are areas that have a little more freedom and I, I would like to go on the record stating I don't support anything as far as some bureaucrat checking my muffler or whatever. So just had to put that out there.
Just don't get on the edge of going through the heart, going to the top. Yeah, I thi- I think the issue, at least community-wide at this point is, 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 you know, if, if we're going to go to the trouble of creating shore power and doing all these various things, we, the, the point was, was, was a very good one. We need to be, you know, looking at, you know, other ways that we can deal with that. And frankly, at this point, yeah. Having forty-year-old buses on, 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 is, is not helping.
Well, considering we have our city buses, you can barely hear them and they do their tour break, but here we have.
All it takes is money.
I think the buses, uh, it's a sticking point because uh, in the summer, the tour companies need to move people. We've got Grayline, we've got Alaska Coach, and then we have the independent tours. I mean, the cliche that buses come here to die. The only reason why those buses come here because in other tourist areas and other cities, they are monitored for emissions. We don't. And it's a stickler. I don't know what's, uh, what the solution is. I mean, we need to move people.
To follow up on that, the real reason we have the buses we have is because of the size of our streets, the tunnel and the turns that we have. Uh, the current uh, environmental, like the NCI coaches, the fifty passenger co- coaches are too tall for the tunnel. And they can't make the federal uh, corner turn. I mean, currently, the current MCIs can't either legally make that turn. Um, and so that's been one of the biggest sticking points. I do know they have trying to bring in some new, I think we have four new buses that will be on the island this year for a bus company. And they're going to trial to see if they can make it work. Um, so I think, I think this is in the works and um, I, I just don't think that conversation has been had between the city and, and those um, folks because they're, they are trying to find a vehicle that can work with our roads. Um, and as what, especially the tunnel, that is probably the number one biggest issue is the, the height restriction on that tunnel. So um, again, I'm just going to throw this in the tourism manager area, our directors areas. Be great to have that person to be able to go do this work and have those communications and, and figure out what can we do to help push it down the road a little bit faster than what, what it is.
Well, I heard um, some general consensus on certain things. What, what is staff here?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I highlighted, I see three major categories. It's the staff, addressing staff issues. Uh, uh, employee satisfaction, retention, recruitment, budget, policy. Uh, and that includes things like our vehicle replacement, asset replacement, setting council priorities for our budget and tourism. And I think that tourism manager position, and I know we've talked about this quite a bit, but that analytical portion of job as far as maximizing port revenue, addressing the items that we discussed tonight, looking at long-term analysis. We're not taught, and we've talked about this before, and even when I spoke before the KDB, we're not talking about marketing pitch again. We're, we're beyond that, as Council Flora said. We're talking about how do we maximize the revenue of our asset and how do we meet the needs of our community at the same time? So, and really addressing, like you said, the infrastructure and the capacity. So those are the three big things I heard. I can summarize them and put small bullet points under each one and bring it to your next council meeting. But those are the three big ones that I heard that really covered most of your discussion.
Grant writer came up to a couple of times.
What's it?
Grant writer.
Oh, grant.
So with this, and I, this might be a question for the manager, but uh, you know, I think we do have really good consistence here on top, at least top three items that we as a, a body want to throw our resources and say, hey, let's, let's really focus and get this done in a timely manner. Uh, what is the process or how does that look moving forward? Let's say, uh, you know, tourism manager position's coming up in April for discussion. That was a big, you know, a lot of tourism-related issues. Um, that could kind of check off the list from the manager's perspective to pass off that work. How do we then go about um, replacing, replacing that list? What does that look like? What does the process look like? So I'm not sure like who goes to it.
Oh, thank you, um, Mr. Mayor, Council Bradbury. What I'd like to do, I'll, I'll pick on the tourism, tourism manager position. I think that really is a big deal and just filling the position does not satisfy what the council has requested. So I think with that, when I bring your summary to you, it's, I'm going to outline the objectives for that person. So when they start, they can hit the ground running and know these are our first tasks and priorities. So things like port revenue possibilities, as well as allocation of um, expense on other departments. Those are two analytical tasks that are going to be a priority in order to meet what the council discussed. Um, I'd like to know, I have the same questions, Council Bradbury, is what that process is going to look like? It could be directing me to say, okay, we've completed this. What's our next list of priorities or have we met a budget theme or is that something you just decide now? Um, and so I kind of have that same question, or maybe it is, I have to bring it back as a, a council action discussion later on, once we've achieved some of the big ones.
Well, I think if we have time, why not go to the next? So we've picked one, two, three, four, five, six items and we pick another six that we think should be come up the next. You know, into the, they put them in the back burner, it was first.
I would prefer to see what the manager brings back because as she said, there are going to be, we have the top three, staff, budget, tourism manager. But within those three probably encompasses two-thirds. So, but before we move on, I, I don't know the answer to Abby's question. It's a good question. I would prefer seeing the synopsis that the manager brings back, make a plan to work through that. And then I think maybe at least as we get through that process, that question either gets raised again or it might partially answer itself as we move on to the next thing. But I would prefer before we add the next set of priorities, this, this could turn into a lot of work. And oh, by the way, we still have the strategic plan, which of course, all of this I understand is, is important.
Yeah, no, I think um, I think uh, I'm thinking that the way that Manager Walsh and um, Council Member Flora mentioned, um, you know, maybe let's see how this first three, this first time we've really had this, let's, they are big tasks. They're not, they're not super easy. I'm not saying they're going to be done next month or anything, but maybe we see how this process goes because it is new for us. And then uh, you know, this work session, it's only forty-five minutes. The, if we're just talking about that priority, once we've completed, I don't see why we couldn't, you know, add a work session right before a, a meeting to just say, hey, guys, you know, yay, this is completed, you know, great, good job, the work is good. Um, what is the next urgent task? I, you know, I heard a lot tonight, and I did it too, is what I thought my priorities were sixty days ago were way different than my priorities today. And as others had mentioned, they did too. They're like, oh shoot, actually this is, this is more important right now for us to focus on. And so um, I think there was a very valid point to kind of wait and see. Um, because you know, something that we thought was important today might not be as important as a new item. And in ninety, a hundred and twenty days down, down the line, also we have election in October as well, so not tying hands of, of previous council. And I think we've all been very open about saying, hey, we're, we're going, we're willing to work. You know, uh, we're willing to put in that effort to ensure that that, that is done even in the summertime, even though we usually forego anything in the summer. You know, we've all committed, including myself, um, that, you know, I will make the time anytime during the, the next six months, so.
I just got a clarifying question.
Sure.
I just heard said several times that we've all came to an agreement on the top three items. Could you please state them so I'm clear? What are the top three we've all?
So what I have down is um, staff and employee satisfaction, as well as compensation, retention, recruitment. Our budget policy and process, the tourism, not just the manager, but tourism in general. We have to address the analysis of our port revenue as well as um, infrastructure and impact to the community. And then the fourth being just the hiring of a grant rider, and I can probably stick that under our staff goals, our staffing. So those are the top three that I heard. And what I'd like to do is, is summarize those and bring that to council uh, at your next meeting. So you can review that and say, yep, that's what we need to do. Those are your marching orders.
That's your question?
Yes, may I have one more follow-up on that? So if we were to go, this falls into the budget policy one. So if we were to go down the path that the mayor suggested, which I think is a great idea. And we wanted to say, uh, the limit of growth on the, the departments is whatever percentage. What would the, how would we actually do that? Would that require a special work session or just a resolution or what would we do? And we, would you like us to do it?
Uh, Mr. Mayor, Council Gass, uh, what I'd like to do is actually have a budget policy work session where we set those priorities and discuss what it means to you. And, and honestly, I already have met, Lacy and I just met with Michelle to start coming up with, what are the things that are fixed costs and that are not negotiable? You know, we can't control the cost of fuel. That's a good one. Utilities is typically a fixed cost that you just have to respond to a budget to. But where can we set policy, you know, and that, that could be things like our um, revenue considerations, looking at alternate revenue sources, how we maximize those, controlling growth in operations. And even down to things like how we use our economies. So um, one of my things, and I know we've talked about this before, is I would really like to see us using our technology more. And, and our staff is working on better IT policies and software use. Because if we can do a job with a piece of technology, Because if we can do a job with a piece of technology rather than three employees, that's what we want to do. We want to control that growth. So those are those are the discussions we would have during a budget work session. And it would be a budget policy work session, not a a budget work session.
So Mr. Mr. Matani, Ms. Gage, the district.
I agree with Councilwoman Bradbury, Councilflora. These are great four priorities, but I'd like to see going forward, maybe we have work sessions every two months. As these priorities fall in place, we pick up another set of priorities. And also have work sessions as before the next budget comes up soon. So that we set a goal for the council and for the finance department of what is coming before us. Not sit here throughout the budget review and cut this and question this and talk about this. Or things come up to us that are all of a sudden new. So I I'd like to see those session, work sessions every two months, maybe. So that we, because we've committed to making sure we do things the right way. I'd like to see that.
Yeah, I think um these are all great. Um I will, I want to bring one thing up I think everybody's possibly think about is um as we were talking about the Broad Street law, um it is getting used. I also know that the life of the PAC building is going to become an emergency at some point for all of us. And um I also think that um that that project with the um that lot would be the best use of that the facility with parking underneath, you know. I don't, I don't discredit that um that we could sell it and stuff. However, uh, there's literally no other, I can't, for all the work that Ty's put into the effort of trying to find other locations. This is a um facility that is benefiting people with disabilities, as well as people that are elderly, who are finding themselves homeless. Um and I think it's something that we all need to consider that. That hospital lot, that's that kind of housing was in that lot. I grew up with that being housing from the time I was five, I grew up in that neighborhood. That neighborhood has been the way it's been since I, and I'm fifty-six years old, dating this, has been that way.
So long?
Yeah, I know, right? Maybe, I'm on my fifties, so. Got another fifty years. But um according to Facebook. So I think that's something that we really need to um, I know that he's working on funding again. Um he can go again to the uh legislatures again. And if we are, if we commit, he can get funding for that lot to fund, to build a facility that can not only benefit um the people within his own that he benefits right now, but we're talking um having the ability to add accessible housing on top of it. That that house, that building originally, when it was a apartment building, not just a hospital, had over, it had thirty-two apartments. And it housed the lowest, it was a low-income housing situation. And it had accessible at that time for being as old as it was. So I think that, you know, those that's, I know that we, these things are really important too. But I know that if that building fails, um there's no way that organization, although they've been in business for or as a nonprofit for thirty years, that they're gonna be able to pick up and put it somewhere else. And right now, they have people that can't go downstairs, can't, so they're they're accommodating, but it's not feasible.
Mr. Finnegan?
Uh my point may be a bit redundant now, so I'll be brief because it's been expressed by a number of council members. Just throwing my two cents in on the notion of identifying a subset of secondary priorities. And Ms. Gage speaks to this to some degree, only in that knowing that these are already some pretty big issues to work on, acknowledging that in the next week or month or months to come, new issues are going to arise that might take priority over anything we set as a second, uh identify as a second set of priorities right now, so. It's a little bit after the fact, just wanted to put those two cents in.
That seems to me like maybe quarterly would be a better period of time to um to review. That's long enough where saying things can get done and short enough where you can review what what's going on and maybe find new things or what have you.
I also want to encourage other council members to really put in the work on their items um so that we, if if you're passionate about the item and you wanna you wanna bring it forward, um I think we have to take on the responsibility to really put in the effort to get what we want, get the information, get it together, um present it accordingly. Uh and that will, like a lot of the lists, I know I've had some of them and I am working with the manager on me, you know, doing the work for those items um to really take that off of, you know, staff as much as obviously, they're there to ask like financial questions and things like that. But um and I I was one, I was just throwing, you know, items out there. But I understand um after previous meetings that we're we're super overwhelmed. And so um I know other, some council members have, you know, put in the work on some of their items that will be coming forward and as I, as have I. And so I just want to encourage, if you are passionate about something on that list, if you do the work, it will get done and and be brought forward. So it's really up to this body if if you're passionate about a a topic that you want completed or not, um that isn't necessarily a pri- on the priority list to to do the work and and to bring it forward and to let the council hear and and make a decision without impacting the staff. So I just want to put that out there because uh everyone has different passions here and 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 different wants. And um so that's a way you can do that and not let it go to the wayside.
Further discussion for the work session. Go ahead.
Just to make sure, I just want the manager to confirm that this is what she was seeking from us as a council and if she's good to go.
Thank you very much, uh, Mr. Mayor, Council Bradbury. Absolutely, this really helps. And like you said, there's several items on that list that are going to take resource and effort. And this gives me an idea of how we can focus what our finite resources, we don't have unlimited full-time. So this absolutely gives me a good idea of moving forward. So I very much appreciate that effort, the council.
Mayor and Council comments. Ms. Gage.
Nothing, thank you.
Ms. Bradbury.
Uh, yeah, I want to say thank you. I know I've kind of pushed this on everyone, uh, as well as some of the other work sessions. So I appreciate you guys' time for coming out and to putting it in, tried to make it super quick. Um and so I just want to say thank you to everyone who who's here and who's gonna be here Saturday and the work sessions in April. I I do appreciate everybody's time for that.
Ms. Matani.
Thank you to everyone for being here. I think this is a start of what will help us streamline what we do for the city and during our council meetings, take up agendas and make policy decisions that will help this community. I am excited and looking forward to further work sessions so that we will achieve what we've achieved today. So thank you.
Mr. Finnegan.
Uh first, my sincere congratulations to Mr. Gas, in addition to his household. And I can't wait to hear about some of his adventures and misadventures in the weeks and months to come. As a dad of thirteen weeks, I'm a wealth of knowledge. They all raise their kids. It's a pass. Second to that, into the larger picture here, uh, this this to me is absolutely essential to how we operate as a council. And I think having the opportunity to sit with staff, to sit with each other and talk about what's important and why will make the rest of the work that we have to do that much easier. And I think I think for for me personally, I think I'll come into any uh regular regular council meeting following a work session like this with a much clearer sense of purpose. So uh I'm I'm glad that we're here. I I do hope that um it seems that it's been of of value to both staff and the council. And I I hope that work sessions like this become a a regular occurrence because I think they are very, very useful. Thank you.
Mr. Gas.
Oh, yeah, I agree with what everyone said. I I find this useful and helpful also. Uh, I'm very thrilled to see how much overlap we all have and how we all seem to be somewhat on the same page on a lot of things. I think that's good. Seems like we're doing that more and more lately, which is good and would make it easier for staff. As I said earlier, my number one thing is is just some stepping stones, I guess, for for going forward with, you know, as reasonably responsible of a budget as we can each year uh moving forward. And uh I really like the mayor's idea of coming up with an agreed percentage on what we're willing to for uh growth percentage to fund. So uh I think that's a great idea. And I sincerely thank everyone for all the kind words on birth of my daughter, she's pretty cool, so.
Mr. Ford.
I'm becoming a fan of these work sessions, as long as they're not too often. We operate pretty well in this format. I think this was a good idea, that I, being able to listen to everybody elaborate what their priorities are. And I shouldn't say surprisingly, but it's kind of nice to see that we mostly land in the same place. We're all different people. But I think this was productive. Congratulations, Mr. Gas, on the birth of his daughter. And in regards to Mr. Finnegan's very generous offer, Jack don't know Jack. Seasoned.
Just wait.
Yeah, that's right.
Just a couple of millennials raising new.
We'll see you. I'll see you running around the track at the end. Push on the car.
I already got the stroller.
The real work starts at thirteen.
Yeah.
Well, I wanted to um echo what everyone else has said, something. Oh, I'm sorry.
But wasn't that her comment?
Yeah.
I was just gonna say, as I see everyone, I totally forgot you were saying that.
Yeah, so it's good to be back. Um, not that I really left, I was just in the little window.
It's nice to have her baby around the table.
It's first time in months.
Yeah.
Like five months?
Yeah, that's what I was.
Because I was gone before you and then you left when I got back and so.
Everybody's been in and out, yeah.
It was nice to see you, see everyone.
Yeah, no, I'm um, yeah. So congratulations to no sleep for the next several months.
Twenty-two years, rest of the way.
As I said, mine will be at two AM and she's twenty-five.
Never goes away.
Nothing ever goes away. There it is, there you go. Otherwise.
Yeah, I think this was a good session today. And actually, I was gonna say that it's nice to look around the table and see them. And it's actually, I think, yeah, I'm feeling good. Is that a hand up or not? Couple of couple of quick quick things. Both both were winning in the June somewhere. Um, first of all, I was horrified this week to see the June Empire. There was a story about, did you guys see what the 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 uh, what what the police department there is offering for bonuses?
Yep.
No.
Thirty thousand dollars for four years. If if you'll go to work for the June Police Department and stay for four years, they'll give you thirty thirty grand. That's what we're up against, folks. You know, it's 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 just not. The positive uh of June. So I was up, we were up there a couple of weeks ago and meeting with various state officials. And of course, they are, you know, always asking for things because that's what we do. And and one of the uh, one of my um friends from up north, shall we say, uh, made the comment, well, the problem is, is your population in Hetchcan is just too stagnant. Boys, thank you so much. We are doing our part. The council's population. So we're we're doing our part. Thank you, thank you.